Good morning, good afternoon and good evening to our audience all over the world. My name is Shinrui and I'm an associate publisher at Cambridge University Press. Thanks for participating in our joint webinar on the journals Robotica and Variable Technologies during the IEEE International Conference on Robotics and Biomechanics. And also special thanks to the conference chair, Professor Wong, on his support to our event. Next slide, please. So our agenda today will be as follows. After this short opening, we will have Miss Best Happens tell the publisher of Robotica and Variable Technologies to briefly talk about the engineering portfolio at Cambridge University Press. Then we will have the introduction of our new journal, Variable Technologies, presented by Professor Agrawal. After that, Professor Cabona and Professor Dai will be introducing about the journal Robotica. The last part of our webinar today will be a Q and A session. If you have any questions or thoughts, please feel free to discuss with our editors then. You can write down your questions or comments in the Q and A chat box, or simply use the raise hand function to talk with us. Next slide, please. So as mentioned before, our three editors in chief will be our panelists today. Professor Cabona and Professor Dai are both editors in chief of Robotica. Professor Cabona is currently with the University of Calabria and also the Chair of the Technical Committee for Robotics and Mechatronics at International Federation for the Promotion of Mechanisms and Machine Science. Professor Dai is academician and fellow of the Royal Academy of Engineering. He is also the fellow of IEEE and ASME. Professor Agrawal is editor in chief of Variable Technologies. He is currently with Columbia University and is also the director of Robotics and Rehabilitation Laboratory. So above are the information of our agenda and panelists today. So let's now welcome Best to introduce about our engineering journals portfolio at the press. So Best, hand over to you.
Thank you very much and hello to everybody. And I just wanted to take a few minutes away from our guest speakers today just to introduce more generally the engineering portfolio at Cambridge University Press. We have a fairly small but growing portfolio. And we cover a wide breadth of topics, including the journals that you'll see here today. And in addition, we also cover the topics of aeronautical engineering, electrical engineering, and navigation science. We have some high-profile collaborations with the Royal Institution of Navigation, the Royal Aeronautical Society, and the European Microwave Association, to name just a few. So we're really, really excited to be able to give you this introduction to our robotics section of the engineering portfolio today. And with that, I would like to hand over the speaker reins to Professor Sunil Agrawal, who is going to give you an introduction to wearable technologies. Shinrui, I think Professor Agrawal is having a little difficulty in joining. Are you able to unmute him? He's here as an attendee.
Is he in the Zoom already?
Yes, as an attendee.
Yeah, I saw him.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can, Sunil, yes.
Oh, first of all, great to be here. Thank you, Shinrui, Elizabeth, Giuseppe, Gian. It's definitely a pleasure for me to talk about variable technologies. This is a relatively new journal that we have started. And the focus of the journal is to bring out research in the community on variable technologies. Shinrui, if you can have the next slide, please. Yes, so as you can see, this is a journal that started out in 2020, so we are fairly new at this time. We have been two years. We have the, it is an online journal and the main focus of the journal is providing the next slide, please. Right, and so our journal focuses on topics such as exoskeletons, exosuits, prosthetics, intelligent autotics, software variable robotics, variable sensor technologies, variable monitors, mechatronics, human computer interaction, human in the loop optimization, physical human robot interaction, interactive controllers. And our goal is that this is the first journal of its kind that publishes original research, review articles, and new developments in the field of variable devices. And if you think about our everyday life, I mean, we are monitoring our heartbeat, we are monitoring the number of steps we take, and also from a variety of applications, both domestic sports or rehabilitation. I think variable technologies is going to grow in the coming decades and as we see. So our journal focuses on all areas of variable technologies. Shinrui, next slide, please. I'm a professor in mechanical engineering at Columbia University in New York City. I'm the editor in chief for this journal. I also have an appointment in the rehabilitation and rehabilitative medicine at Columbia University. So we're looking at a team which is very diverse from all across the world. Shinrui, next slide, please. This is just a listing of all of the associate editors. We are, of course, very excited to have all of you included at some point in time as you grow your submissions into the journal. We have from all different continents, just to point out some of the associate editors from China, Professor Chineng Wang from Peking University, Professor Hu Chan Zhao from Chinghua University, and Professor Peter Schall from Shanghai Jiaotong University. So these are some of the colleagues in China who are a part of this journal. But we have representation from all continents, as I said, Europe, United States, Asia, and we are, of course, growing into all parts of the world. We are very open to having diversity in our journal editorial board, and we look forward to growing this as we over time. Next slide, please, Shinrui. So we, general metrics are still upcoming, but we have published about close maybe seventeen papers in the year number one, 2020 to 2021. So the average citations per article for those papers that were published in the year 2020 to 2021 is about 3.2. We are very excited about it. I mean, this is just the first metric, and of course, this is going to be hopefully included in impact factor for the journal that we are soon going to apply for that. We have the gold open access. Our goal is to publish about thirty articles per year. Just to kind of give you an idea, our submission rates are growing at about 125% per year. I think our, this year's number, our 2022 numbers, that's even stronger in terms of how many papers we have, that were submitted to the journal, as well as how many have been accepted. And our average time to decision, first decision is about sixty days. We are working towards getting that even better, but that's where we are right now. Next slide, please. These are just a few papers that have been published in the journal from Germany, from Heidelberg University, from Bihang University in China, Harvard University Robotics Institute in Santana, Waterloo, and again, this is just a small sampling of the papers that have been published. Next slide, please. This is just a list of papers that have been highly cited or most read in terms of the journal, and some of these topics involve exoskeletons, occupational exoskeletons, active assistance, origami-inspired, and just a lot of physiological measurements from the human body as people are wearing exoskeletons. Next slide, please, Shinrui. We have a number of special issues that are on the books right now. One of the issues is lower limb prosthesis by Elliot Rouse from University of Michigan, Nicola Vitello, and some of the other researchers from all over the world. We have another exoskeletons or other issues focused on human factors and ergonomics, occupational exoskeletons. And again, this is a growing theme, and there are several other special issues that are on the books right now. Next slide, please. These are some, yeah, and we are very much open to any ideas that have, that from the community in terms of new proposals, new ideas, and of course, I mean, any journal is to serve the community, and so we are very open to getting your ideas and see how we can incorporate that within the readership, as well as programming of the journal. So thank you very much, and it has been a pleasure to tell you about this channel. Thank you, Shinrui, thank you, Elizabeth.
Okay, thanks, Professor Agrawal. And so I think we are going to move to the next part, which is the introduction of Robotica. I think Professor Dai seems to have some issue with Zoom meeting, so maybe Professor Cabon, you can introduce the journal to us.
Thank you very much, Shinrui. Yes, I will introduce this journal, which I call, I am co-editor in chief together with Professor Dai. Next slide first. Can you, okay, so this, this journal is one of the oldest established multidisciplinary journals in the field of robotics. It was founded in 1983, and since then, it's indexed in Scopus. So it's one of the oldest, and it's one of the, having a clear multidisciplinary focus. Next slide, please. So the aim is to put together, bring together contributions coming from several different areas and several different expertises, which are covered within the wide field of robotics. So you will see, we are trying to attract traditional robotics contributions, but also more and more computer science, and even other fields and areas that are going to be covered in the recent achievements of robotics. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the journal is co-edited in chief by myself and Professor Dai, and this was established in 2020. So we took over from Professor Greg Chirikian, who did an excellent job for almost fifteen years, I think. Next slide, please. So the associate editors list is widening every year. Every year, we launch a recruitment for new associate editors, so you are welcome to apply for that. And the aim is to be as much diverse as possible, covering also from academic and geographic viewpoints, several different areas and fields. So we have associate editors coming from all the continents, and just to call a few names, I can mention Professor Carl Nelson from Lincoln University, United States. I can mention Professor Lofte Ramadan from Sharjah University, Emirates Arabs, United Emirates Arabs. And I can mention Professor Di Gregorio from Italy. I can mention several other Chinese colleagues, Wu Wei from Salford, Jing Su from Chinghua University, Chris Zhang from University of San Ken One from Canada, and so on. So you are very much welcome to apply if you so wish, and with the aim to farther widen the coverage, both from topic viewpoint and from geographic area coverage viewpoint. Next slide, please. So looking at the numbers, our journal, as I mentioned, was established in 1983, and since then, it has been having a good pace, growing pace, especially in the last couple of years where we have been leading the journal. We have been experiencing a growth of about 25%, both in the submissions and in the impact factor. So we are growing from both viewpoints, which is quite good, and we aim to grow even farther in the future with your help. As looking at the time to first decision, we are currently at sixty-three days, and we still aim to reduce, to drop this number in the future. We feel that this is one of the perceived, the quality indices for a journal nowadays, where we are really moving very, very fast, and we cannot anymore stick at the old schemes with long review time process. So the editors in chief, but also the whole editorial board, is committed to keep this number improved, still improving in the future. Next slide, please. So in terms of countries, as you can see, China is one of the strongest contributor to our journal. So thank you very much for this, all the participants to this webinar. I would like to express my strong thank to anyone contributing from China, but we, as I mentioned, would like to cover all the countries worldwide, keep a good balance of contribution. So if you are coming from other countries, you are very, very welcome as well. So in terms of numbers, you can see that submissions, the number of published papers is growing year by year, slightly growing year by year. And this year, I think, we exceeded 150, the number here, states 146, which is, I think, one or two months ago, actually. Anyway, we are, our target is to further grow also in terms of number of submissions, so don't be afraid if we exceed this number. Next slide, please. So in terms of topics, I already mentioned, I feel the main point of Robotica journal is multidisciplinarity. This means that we cover several different aspects, and we don't give priority to any specific topic, meaning that we very much appreciate topics coming from mechanical engineering, that is my background, but we very much appreciate and like contributions coming from control area. You see, robot control is actually the main topics of published papers with forty-one papers contributed in the last three years. We also have relevant contributions on topics like parallel robots, which is the most, second most attractive topic, path planning, but also applications such as medical robotics, rehabilitation robotics, industrial robotics are here covered. So you see, medical robotics is a strongly growing topic, currently having thirty-five submissions published in the last three years. Next slide, please. So in terms of collaborations, our journal is aiming to cover a wide range of key institutions, which are our reference, such as Chinghua University in China. Recently, we had some meeting with them, and we tried to involve more specifically those key institutions in the editorial board, but also contributing as reviewers, in terms of submissions and so on. So if you are not listed here, you are very welcome to join as a collaborator to our journal, so you are very welcome also in this. Next slide, please. So here you can find the list of the most cited papers in the recently published in our journal. And also here, you may notice, we have contributions in terms of rapid prototyping, for instance, or algorithms for collision-free navigation of mobile robots, that is also a very hot topic in our field. Prosthetic and robotic wrist is, again, another top cited paper and topic in our field. High-speed manipulation with wire-driven or cable-driven robots is very attractive, and this is demonstrated by citations as well. Last but not least, in this topic, endoscopic capsules are quite attractive and interesting. We even have Pietro Valdastri as one of our associate editors, and actually, he is really contributing also in terms of top cited papers. Next slide, please. So in terms of our activities, promotional activities, we feel that in the role of a journal, international journal, should also try to attract and focus at hot topics, key topics in our research community. So accordingly, we are collecting proposals for invited special issues, which may be linked to a conference, but also may be linked to an hot topic, on a research topic of high relevance in our community. So here you might find information on some of the ongoing special issues that we are running. For instance, innovative robot design for special applications, which has been proposed by Professor Alessandro Gasparito, University of Udi in Italy, together with Professor Yukio Takeda, Tokyo Institute of Technology, and Giulio Rosati, University of Padova, Italy. So I feel, I think this special issue is also linked to a conference, which has been running in Italy, IFIT conference, which has been organized by IFTOM Italy Naples last year. But it's also open to submissions relevant to this specific field of research. Similarly, another special issue deals with intelligence in robotics. As you know, control and computer science are getting more and more significance in this field. So a proposal has been coming from Professor Hong Kao from Chinese Academy of Science, Xium Li, University of Science and Technology of China, I think Xia, University of Science and Technology of China, Wang Chen from Tongji University, China, and our co-editor in chief, Professor Yang Dai. I should mention that every special issue need to have a resident associate editor helping in running the review process. Next slide, please. So you are, of course, very welcome to propose other special issues, for instance, as Link at Robio or any other conference. We also propose in some circumstances, some best paper awards, which are covered by Cambridge University Press, and in particular, we have been promoting an award for Robio Conference. I think this will be announced very soon. Next slide, please. I think that's it for my presentation. I would like to mention again, thank the organizer of Robio for inviting us and for allowing us to present our activities, and I think there is a big possibility of synergies between this conference and our journal. Thank you very much for your kind attention. I'll hand back the floor to Shinrui. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Professor Cabon. I think we are still waiting for Professor Dai, who can introduce about the Robio Conference, but we're waiting for Professor Dai. I wonder if you have any questions? If you have any questions or thoughts regarding the two journals, you are welcome to put your questions in the Q and A chat box, or you could use the raise hand function, and we will unmute you, and then you could talk to us. I see Professor Dai is here.
In the end, thank you.
Hi, Gian.
Hi, Giuseppe. Shinrui. Our Sunia.
And Professor Dai, maybe you could talk about the Robio Conference on behalf of the conference chair, Professor Wong.
Okay, so Robio was held each year, and so it's one of the key conferences of IEEE Ross Robotics and Automation System. So it's the financially sponsored conference by IEEE, so they can take IEEE name before Robio. So in this Robio, I think online regular presentation will be four percent, because China is still experiencing the shift from COVID to Omicron and to go to more normal life. So in such cases, a lot of people couldn't join the conference, but they can do online presentation, and all the presentations will be published in IEEE Explorer. So that planner speech, we have several key figures, and also award sessions with oral presentations. The key thing for Robotica is the conference agrees to present Robotica Best Paper Award to all attendee, to the best paper recipient. So I think that's very good to promote our Robotica in IEEE, in the world. Let's see the next page. So they have five thirty-nine submissions from twenty-one countries and regions, and three eighty-nine final submissions. So acceptance rate ratio is seventy-two point two. So also eleven accepted late. So if we're looking to the geography, so that's mainland China, UK, Japan, Hong Kong, USA, Germany, India, Russia, Australia, and Spain, and France, and so a lot of European countries here, Italy.
So I think Professor Dai's internet is not stable, maybe. Let's wait for a couple of seconds. So I think Professor Dai's internet is not stable, maybe let's wait for a couple of seconds. And Professor Dai, you are muted yourself.
Okay, thank you. And so let's move to the next page. So the top twelve submitted topics. So that possibly also show the conference spectrum. Bio-memetics, bio-inspired, UAV, that also the hot topic in community, SLAM, navigation mapping, motion planning, tracking, lab, exoskeleton, robot learning, medical design, mechanisms control, soft robots, grasping, micro nano human robot. So it's all in our Robotica spectrums. So I think the conference has a good match to Robotica. And also in terms of the topics, in terms of the geography and spectrum. So I think in the in the next several Robio, possibly we can build up this match from Robio and Robotica. That would be very good to conference and also to the journal. Next page. So the planner, plenary talk, we have Iguo Song, who is the leading figure in AI in China, is from Southeast University. And he has established himself in the AI field with his already leading work. And then it's me, and I will talk about this arts inspirational robots. So how arts are inspiring robots and robotics? And for a time being of three hundred years since since Leonardo da Vinci time. And then we have Chen Yang Shen from Tianjin University. We have Jian Ri Xie from Xian Jiaotong University, Hui Bin Yu from Chinese Academy of Science, Hong Hai Liu from Hui Bin Yu Institute of Technology. Virtually, Hong Hai was my, is my second PhD graduated in two thousand and two. And this year, he was elected to be a fellow of European Academy of Engineering. And I think it's Europa Academia. Okay, next page. And Hong Hai Liu, just Hong Hai Liu is doing a lot on bio-inspiration and also on human augmentation and rehabilitation, particularly for children with some syndromes. And he's using robotics, AI to treat children's disease. He was a chair professor in I think at Bournemouth University in South England. We have Hui Bin Dong, Beihang University, Chen Dong Song, Shandong University, Liu Liu Liu, and Jing Na, Quanming University, Tian Tianxi, and Ning Sun. Okay, next page. So that's the keynote talk. Prior to keynote talk was a plenary speech. And you can see the history of this IEEE Robio. From two thousand and four, Sanyang five, Hong Kong, two thousand and six, Quanming, seven, Sanyang, eight, Bangkok. So nine, Guilin, twenty-ten, Tianjin, twenty-eleven, Phuket. And so Bangkok Thailand, Phuket, maybe Thailand as well. Twenty-twelve, Guangzhou, twenty-thirteen, Shenzhen. Twenty-fourteen, Bali is in Indonesia. Twenty-fifteen, Juhai, next to Macau. So twenty-sixteen, Chengdu, twenty-seventeen, Macau. Twenty-eighteen, Kuala Lumpur. Twenty-nineteen, Dali. Twenty-twenty-one, Sanyang, and twenty-twenty-two now is to Sichuan, Sichuan, but now. So twenty-twenty-three will be in COOP summary. So I think the most in Southeast Asia and to cover all the topics, the leading topics in robotics community with all the submissions from European, Asia, and North America. Next page. So Rock Cup is another conference. So in this conference, Professor Herson Wong is also the general chair. So and the conference started from, if we look at from twenty-fifteen, Changsha, and then experiencing Okinawa, Japan, and Angkor Wat, Cambodia, and Asa, Asa Hikawa, Japan, and Xin, Xiling, China, and then twenty-nineteen, Kuzk, Russia. And then twenty-twenty-four, or twenty-eighteen is Kandimar, Maldives. Twenty-twenty-four will move to Alaskan, Norway. I think twenty-twenty-three is still, is Datong, China. So twenty-twenty-two is Guiyang. So twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, China. Twenty-four, twenty-four moves to Norway. A good conference in under IEEE ROS umbrella. Okay, we go to next page. Okay, so it's a good conference. And also Professor Herson Wong is the general chair of IROS twenty-twenty-three. So he, Professor Wong, is, I think, proposing to have this Robotica Best Paper Award in IROS twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five. That would be very good. So if we keep track with Robio, and then we can also wave the flag of Robotica with IROS in twenty-twenty-five. I think that's all possibly from Professor Herson Wong.
Ah, okay, Professor Dai, I'm really sorry that I just joined, I can't join for a few minutes. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, I can hear. So do you want to talk a little bit, Professor Wong?
Yeah. Okay, so have you introduced the slide? My slide, how you make the presentation of my slide?
Yes, 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 we did.
Okay, okay. Yeah, 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 okay. So I just, I want to say that, yeah. Now I'm in the, during the conference of Robio now, in a southern part of China. Then the Robio is one of the major robotics conference and this nearly twenty years. Professor Dai mentioned about we can build the relationship with Robotica and the Robio and also the ARCA. They both two conferences are IEEE finance support. So they are almost the IEEE conference. So we are thinking that we can build the relationships such as we set up the paper walls and also we can organize some special issue in the journal. We can invite some best paper or finalists to submit their paper to this special issue. And we can build a more other strong relationship as proposed by Professor Dai. You know, Robotica is one of the well-known robotics journals. So we are very glad that we can have this relationship. And also Professor Dai mentioned about the IROS conference, that's the very important, the robotics conference, where the targeted number in twenty-twenty-five was like five thousand attendees. So we think that we can, we can propose that we, whether we have the Robotica best paper walls in IROS also. Yeah, I think that's all what I want to say. So any comments or feedback? Or any question I can answer?
Thank you, great. Professor Wong. I think this is excellent. If we build up our closer relationship between Robio, Icar and Robotica, and particularly, we are aiming for this IROS twenty-twenty-five to build a stronger relationship with IROS as well in twenty-twenty-five. Beth or Giuseppe, do you have any comments?
No, I just confirm what you said. I'm very happy and glad to put this forward. And I think there will be bigger opportunity to cooperate with Robio, with IROS, and all the IEEE ROS community. Thank you very much for putting this forward.
Thank you.
Okay, Professor Wong, yes. And I think that Robotica is under Cambridge University Press. So it's a very prestigious publisher. Under this publisher, we have a number of leading journals. Robotica is one of those. And today, we have joined the meeting with Robotica and wearable technologies. And so two editorial boards are joining to have this session. And particularly, in the opening of Robio. So two editorial board meeting together with the opening of Robio is a very good event.
Yes, yes, right, right. Thank you for your support. Yeah, so if any other suggestions or comments, I think we can discuss later if you have any other, yes.
Yes, so I think the award, Robotica Best Paper Award will be held on Wednesday, I believe so.
Yeah, today, later during the conference dinner banquet, yeah, we will have the world dinner, yeah.
Okay. Great. I pass over to Beth or Giuseppe. Giuseppe.
Yeah, I think Beth is not replying at the moment. Just to Professor Wong, thanks again. We will get back to you regarding the special issue through Professor Dai, of course. I think you can, you are, of course, welcome to propose a special issue attracting the best papers of Robio as well.
Sure, thank you. Looking forward to work with you, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, thanks a lot for allowing us to contribute today.
Thank you. So, okay.
Shi Rui, can you take back the floor? And if there are any question or we can answer them. It's good opportunity from the floor, you get some questions or if you have some point to make in terms of hot topics or in terms of possibilities of future cooperations, please write them into the chat and we will try to answer as much as we can. I think there is quite a few people connected today and we can mutually benefit of this interaction. So don't be afraid or scared. And of course, you can also contact us later on by email or through the journal to get more information and to establish further interactions. So again, please write your comments in the chat and we will be very happy to answer now. Or feel free to contact with Professor Dai, with myself and with all the colleagues and team at Sunil, of course, and from the journal wearable technologies and all the committee and community at Cambridge University Press is at your disposal.
Yes. I think we have a good attendees, reached seven sixty-nine attendees.
Yes.
Yes.
Top was seventy-one. So I think it's quite good, quite good participation. And I hope we can have some interaction as well, if you so wish.
Yeah, I also see some attendees are from IEEE Robio.
Yes. Particularly with them, it will be nice to establish some interaction. I see also some of the associate editors of Robotica joining us. So I take this opportunity also to thank them. We are indebted to all the editorial board and reviewers and professors. I think that's really based on all your efforts. So thank you very much.
Yes.
I think Shi Rui has some issues. I cannot see her online.
Um, yeah, as Professor Cabon mentioned, if you have any question or thoughts, you are welcome to put it in the chat box or you could just raise hand and you could just, you could talk with Professor Cabon and Professor Dai.
Maybe there is one point I would mention. Robotica is a traditional journal, meaning that you can publish without any fee, but you can also publish open access. And I think there is a process transformative process. We will move to more and more open access in the future.
Yes, and also Robotica is working very hard to shorten the review period. So we try to to reach sixty days return or even less to retain any contributors, authors, the first decision. So in such case, we shorten the review round and to speed up the review and publication period. So in such case, the paper can be quickly reviewed and quickly returned with suggestions and comments. So this will benefit both the community and the authors.
Yes, indeed. Also, we are open for those who are willing to volunteer as reviewers. So if if you wanna, if you are in early stage of career and you wish to contribute as reviewer, just drop us. just drop us an email. We are happy to widen the review committee. Actually, we are really very much indebted with any of the volunteers doing this job.
Yes, absolutely. So we try to have as more as possible reviewers, particularly from young people and agile people from research.
Indeed.
Sometimes I receive the email, say, I would like to become a reviewer. That would be good, very good. I think that's good for career development, particularly for professional development and PD.
Indeed. And this is also a way to learn how to write papers by reviewing others.
Absolutely. And you can see how other people are writing and how other people are responding to reviewers' comments to revise their papers, to make their papers better and better. In the end, when they publish in the journal, their papers are in good quality with a leading science.
Excellent. I think we had today useful first meeting. And I don't know if there are any other questions. I cannot see the chats coming.
No, nothing. I think Sunia Agora has left.
Yeah, unfortunately, he had to leave for another meeting, I think. So.
And the attendees are including associate editors from Wearable Technologies.
Indeed, I think.
Two editorial boards are joined meeting.
That's really excellent. I think we can make some synergies since the two journals have very different profiles. Robotica is more interdisciplinary, while Wearable Technologies is more specific and focused on hot topic.
More focused. I think possibly Xinri, you can take a group of photo. Say, if all people, attendees, just turn on your cameras, and then Xinri can take a group of photo.